All right. Good evening. Welcome to the special open session of the MRH School Board on August 6, 2020. I thought it had the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to clues.
Thank you, Ralph. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Well, first item in the agenda is information item that I wanted to share for some context. We, obviously, the district and as individual board member leaders have been paying attention to regional issues for some time. Obviously, COVID has also exacerbated some of the challenges that for education and I know I had let folks know that Nikki and I were approached by some partners with Ed Hub and other about eight weeks ago now to be involved in some conversations with parents and educators across the region who developed this list of demands, which I know some folks find aggressive, but I think the point of these is to be clear about what folks are reimagining our K-12 education system could look like with the unfortunate opportunity that COVID has provided to us. I know that MRH employees participated in some of the conversations that developed these demands. I know there were several MRH families who participated on and off and Nikki and I have continued to engage with that and have shared it with other school boards around the region, too. I hope everybody, community members and staff of the district, as well as the board, take a chance to kind of read through it. Don't think there's really anything too controversial ultimately in these demands. Things require some some phasing in our current conditions here, but we're going to obviously hear a little bit more this evening about some some pieces that happen to actually connect back to several of these demands as well. So I do again want to just provide it kind of as framing. And I know Nikki may want to say something as well, just for framing, but like I said, I feel like this is a great opportunity to acknowledge that what we're doing in our district is connected and some of the regional conversations were continuing to be seen as regional visionaries around some of this stuff with our educators and our parents and our board. And so just again, thank you all for taking the time to take a look at this. I'll stop Nikki if you want to say anything.
Sorry. Just regarding the the five demands that you can find, starting on page one and then going on to page two. I think that we are doing a lot of these like right now. The first demand is like tech equity and clear expectations for virtual learning and we are already you like our administrators are already addressing that. I want to give a really good example. Yesterday, I was in on the webinar that Dr. Thompson and Ed and Ben Gleason was a part of and they presented for the elementary. And there was a question about what to do when you have three children that will all be on a Chromebook and how that's going to affect the speed of the internet. And Dr. Thompson was like, you know, just reach out directly to us so we can address that issue. Because she was like, that's that's new to me, but just contact us so we can figure that out. So I think that's just a clear example of our district already working to meet the clear expectations of virtual learning and working on tech equity. So I think, you know, we're going to keep doing that. Our administrators are doing a great job of that and that's at the forefront of our mind. There are a few of these where I think they'll probably be discussed like later on when we when the board has its retreat to talk about our educational equity policy and how we're moving that forward. One example of that is the third demand, which is like redefine school safety. I know that we've talked about SROs before and I know that that conversation is not done. We're going to talk about that again and figure out what our students would like to have because I'm pretty sure we talked about them having a voice in that as well. So I won't go through each one. I will touch on the fourth one, which is support students with disabilities. That's a part of the list of demands and I think any and everybody that's watching our work sessions and our board meetings, we are talking about our special school district students every time. So we are definitely not leaving them behind and we are continuing to focus on what they need and getting them what they need. So those are really like the the demands that I really wanted to draw out and discuss. But like I said, I think that we are working on all of these right now as we're also trying to get through reentry.
So ladies, I want to thank you for your obvious passion and commitment to this work and I just want to clarify that this we can bring forward to the retreat, right? Is that the plan? So we can have more of a robust conversation because Katie, you had good words in there about some of them are aggressive. Some of them are just embedded in the culture of who we are as MRH and we've been a leader in this work for years. Some we need a lot more conversation around to get some comfort levels and what's right for us, but I didn't want the opportunity to go by without thanking you for your commitment to it and just knowing that we as a board, I think, you know, we just got to have take some time and dig deeper in it. And I think that would be a the retreat would be the rest, the best place for that.
Yeah, I think it also gives some regional context to the work we're doing individually in our district and a common, I guess, framework and language around expressing those things. I think we kind of when we are at our retreat, I think an auditing kind of what we have been doing and what we plan on doing, I think, is a is a good step in the right direction. And I think this helps do that and gives us a clear path to do that. So thank you for this work.
I agree. Thank you very much for all the time and effort you all put into it.
Thanks. There is. There's been a lot of community members involved across the whole region. It's been really cool to be on Zooms with you know, educators, parents from around the region. We have a lot of commonalities, which is very cool, too. Great. We don't have to belabor that again. We will, as a board, look at it more and again, would encourage community members to take a look at it themselves. Um, but as as Nikki mentioned, I think this was also a nice setup for some of the updates we're getting tonight. So it looks like Chris and Chromebooks and Hot Spots is next on the agenda unless Karen wants to frame anything.
All right. I will go through my list here, starting with hotspots. Good evening, everybody, by the way. So at this time, we do have a sufficient number of hotspots to accommodate the need that has been identified within the district. We are watching that carefully, however, if that were to shift suddenly or if that were to drift upward, we would T-Mobile has assured us that they have sufficient stocks and have those to us in a very short period of time. So at this point, the data is telling so I am working directly with the building schools to get those distributed to the families and that'll that'll begin happening probably as early as next week. All right. Are there any other questions around that?
Chris, this may not be specifically to the hotspots, but I know that we obviously were ahead of this in some ways because of the audit that we did back in 2018 of to understand what students have access at home and which students did not. And obviously, it's come up many times from community members who are concerned that we are potentially missing some some kids or some families who may not be connected to the internet. Do we have any sense of how successful we've been with offering the low cost, you know, internet options to folks? Is that something that we've just shared information on or we actually followed up to find out, you know, it's the I think it's like the $10 a month kind of internet access pieces?
Yeah. So we did have a number of families that took advantage of that this past spring. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, Katie. I apologize for that. I didn't. The principals, though, are, I guess, the process that we utilized this past spring was to, since Spectrum was in fact offering, they were actually offering that service for free through the end of June. So we did have specifically at the high school and middle school, I know a number of families had taken advantage of that. However, at the end of June, of course, you know, that became a charged service. So it is a federal mandate through the FCC that the the internet service providers do offer a low cost option for those who qualify for SNAP. So that information is going to be also distributed. And if folks were able to take advantage of that, we would ask them to do so and free up that hotspot for another family. However, if they need it, they'll they'll receive that hotspot. So.
Great. Could you follow up with us on on numbers around that? Thank you. Francis, did you have a question?
It's just, I don't know. Chris, I don't know. Do we have, did we tap into any of the CARES Act money from the county around these technology initiatives? Okay.
I've submitted the I've submitted the the forms. I was supposed to have heard sometime in July as to whether or not the the first one was awarded and I have not yet received that word. So there was another one that the county put out just this past week that I applied for. So we'll see. And as far as the the first round of CARES funding that came through the title mechanism, for lack of a better word, that funding mechanism, that those funds will go directly to Chromebooks and other items that are related directly to our response to COVID. And I believe we just, we did one small drawdown at the very end of this past fiscal year. So I think it was in mid-June. The as soon as we're invoiced for the Chromebooks and some of the other cleaning equipment that we've ordered, we'll request drawdowns on those.
Thanks.
No problem. All right. So that brings us to Chromebooks. So this is a Herculean endeavor to get all these Chromebooks out to our students, but sat the tech team down and we I think came up with a a very workable mechanism to get these Chromebooks distributed. We've been doing this grade seven through 12 for like 12 years now, I think. So it's sort of old hat. There is one little wrinkle here in that usually students just kind of wander in two weeks before school starts and they grab their computers. Things have to be a little bit more regimented this time around. So the seventh grade, because of the because of the social distancing measures and the like, seventh grade teachers have been doing virtual home visits. So Mike put in place I what I think is a great process is as the family was scheduling their home visit the day before their home visit, they were to come and pick up their Chromebook. So we were able to work to work with that schedule to have those Chromebooks ready for those kids to come pick up. Not all of them have, but the majority have. So they've been coming to the school and picking those up. There it's down in the gym lobbies where we've been doing that. Parents come in, they sign the form on top of their student's computer and they put the form in the little inbox and off they go. So that's been working very well for the seventh grade. However, next week begins on August 10th, the eighth grade pickup. And that will be located in the high school, middle school cafeteria. So in much the same way, it's there'll be tables set up and each advisory will have a table and those computers will be laid out and parents will come in, they'll sign the forms, they'll take the computer and off they go. So that'll start on August 10th. Then on August 17th, we'll add to that nine through 12. The high school administration have requested to dovetail the distribution of the Chromebooks with the distribution of any of the other classroom materials and supplies that teachers need to get to their students. So this will be a one stop shop for that, just to minimize the amount of time the kids or and or parents need to be in the building. So they'll come in and they'll grab their Chromebook and then they'll go on to the next designated spot to pick up any classroom materials that that they need. And then off they go. The next is our grades one and two. I guess it's really one through six at the ECC and elementary students. Those distributions are going to begin on Monday, August 17th. They will all be distributed from the elementary school. We've decided to consolidate that operation. I have a relatively small technology team and we can't get too spread out. Otherwise, we don't operate nearly as effectively. So I believe we've made just a few changes to that procedure. We'll have surveillance cameras on the on on the room so that we can make sure that if parents have any trouble, we can scoot in there to help them. So that will begin on the 17th and Cindy and Cynthia, Angela and Megan have been very helpful in getting that all those details worked out. So the last thing I do need to talk about, we while we do have Chromebooks for all of our first through 12th graders, we are still waiting on our our large shipment that we get every year. Every year, we replace our seventh grade, our ninth grade and our 11th grade Chromebooks. In addition to that, we've added another grade level to account for our kindergarten class. That totals 525 units that was in this year's order. Those units have yet to arrive. They're not scheduled to arrive. Last heard I heard from the distributor was the first or second week of September. Well, we start school on the first week of September. So this is somewhat problematic. We've gone through and pulled every Chromebook that we can from the building. We've gotten enough to cover our first through 12th. We have about a third of the kindergarten covered. So next week, we'll begin communicating with families. If they do have a device that's sufficient for them, for their student to learn on for temporarily, we will make sure that the families that absolutely have no other options will have a have a Chromebook distributed to them prior to the start of school. And I, as a as a measure, I had a vendor reach out to me who said that they would have Chromebook shipping in the next two to three weeks. So I have, it's it's a contingency order in place with said vendor. If the schedule works out like he anticipates, we should receive that shipment a week earlier than the other that I've been waiting on all spring and all through the summer. So I'm, we're all fingers crossed that on the 24th, I'll get note that those Chromebooks have shipped and we'll get them in time. However, the supply chain for the technology, specifically Chromebooks, has been very fragile. So we are going to do our very best to make sure that we have all of our families covered and we'll be communicating to the families via the principals and probably robocalls from the central office.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns there? Great. Roxanna?
Good evening, everybody. As you are aware, last Thursday, I put out about an 11 minute video talking about our virtual option. I understand there was an audio blip, which we tried to re-correct. So it definitely is an option for K through 12 families, not just six through 12 families. And we then had, we've had meetings in each of the buildings. We have received some questions. And so I thought it might be a good idea to to just go over with the board again, some basic information and then take you through a fact sheet that actually comes from our own board policy around virtual instruction. Okay? So you might recall that the state of Missouri has long had virtual instruction program. It was MoVIP and then it was called MoCap. About a year and a half ago, they dramatically revised the law around virtual instruction. And we revised our board policies last summer in accordance. So our board policies that deal with 100% virtual instruction are policies IGCD and then the accompanying administrative procedure. What that virtual law, by the way, those laws are the Missouri revised statutes of Missouri 162 dot 1250 and 161 dot 670 that govern virtual instruction. All of the components of that law have been incorporated in our policy. So if you really just look at the policy, then then you understand that. In Missouri, virtual instruction has very specific rules. There are about 12 standards that must be met for you to be a virtual provider. Virtual providers are approved by the state of Missouri and they are considered MoCap vendors and MoCap courses. So to run a virtual program in Missouri, you need to use one of the approved vendors or the district would be responsible for making sure that all of the things in statute were in place for any virtual instruction that we would do. And that's an exhaustive list. I won't read that list to you, but it includes things like very specific software, electronic security, system requirements, video broadcasts, etc. So in other words, virtual instruction has to be put together in a very specific way if it's going to be all that a student receives. And Missouri approves MoCap vendors that meet those requirements. Therefore, our policy says that we will use MoCap approved vendors and MoCap approved courses. So when we're talking about the MRH Virtual Academy, by our policy, we are using MoCap approved vendors and MoCap approved courses because it meets that virtual trajectory. We've had some questions about what does that actually mean? It just means that any of the coursework that we would be using would meet all of these criteria for to ensure that students have a good virtual experience, that things meet Missouri standards, they've been ordered in a right way, the technology is working properly and on and on and on. All other instruction in the state of Missouri is governed by a myriad of other intersecting laws and assumes some in-person attendance. And as you're aware, Missouri law is weird and wonderful entanglements. And so what what we've been told for this year and I will get to my point with the virtual instruction in a minute, but what we've been told for this year is that people can choose onsite attendance and that would be governed by regular Missouri law. They can choose all virtual, which is governed by the laws that govern virtual, which would be our policy IGCD. Or in cases of spread, they are allowing variances to be written either by an AMI plan, which is up to 36 hours of instruction or an AMIX plan, which we have filed, we do not have final approval on. An AMIX plan would allow us to provide distance learning and I'm separating that from virtual because it's a different set of rules. We can, you know, remote learning by computer temporarily for we can close schools for a temporary COVID closure. It also works, for example, if we were to have to close a classroom and the rest of the district district were open and it could also work in scenarios by which an individual student would need to be gone for an extended period of time because, you know, there was illness in their household. Just for your purposes, for everything except 100% virtual instruction, we will be only able to claim attendance and funding based on the time that those students would actually be with us in school. And there's a complex set of rules that they've put in place for that and how we have to exclude and count certain days. Okay? That's not really the point of this conversation, but I'm just trying to give you some context that there literally are kind of two different lanes for virtual instruction and everything else. And so we want to just assure families, we've been having a lot of conversations with families, that if they intend to stay out for the entire semester and that's what they want, if they want virtual learning, then we need to put them in the Missouri Virtual Learning Academy. We'll make sure that they have a MoCap approved course. We will try to use MRH teachers and the benefit of that is we will use MRH teachers at least in K through six. We will try to do it where we can match certifications in seven through 12 is because we can also amend with our own content and we can use their systems but keep them as much on pace with what's happening in MRH classrooms as possible. That way, we meet the requirements of virtual learning, but our students still get contact with MRH teachers and will be ready to reenter when when the time is right to do that for the family. When we use MoCap vendors and by policy, we do have enrollment periods, the enrollment period opened and will be open until 10 days after the start of the semester. And folks should not think that just because they took the survey, they're done. They will be contacted according to policy, will follow our policy. They will be contacted by an MRH staff member. We'll talk them through their options. We'll look at educational best interests for the child and we will complete an enrollment form that the parent will have final sign off on. Every student that takes more than two virtual courses a year, again, by policy and by law, has to have an individualized instruction plan. So we'll be doing those plans and making sure that everything lines up and that students are able to fit the courses that they're wanting to take with whatever, you know, we have alignment, particularly the secondary level. We want to make sure that it fits their five-year plan and that everybody's on track and moving forward. We also received questions about special education services. Obviously, in this both scenarios, students are going to get their special education services under Missouri virtual law. In addition to our approval of courses, though, the IEP team gets to weigh in to make sure that those selections are appropriate based on IEP. And so again, we will be following a district policy, which is in alignment with state law. I don't know if I need to read through all of this for you, but I just want to make sure that you understand that we do have a process. Once we find out who wants the virtual option, we'll be going through this with families to make sure that that their the courses are well aligned, that we understand what support systems are in place, that we've looked at potential reentry and that all of those things are happening for the students in accordance with our policy and in accordance with law. We will be providing computers. So the the procedures that we approved last year say that we would provide computers for students in seven through 12, but not for kindergarten through sixth grade. Obviously, we've written a variance and we, of course, will be providing computers for any student who wants it in this particular period of time. If anybody is transferring to us that's enrolled in a MoVIP, we will accept that enrollment and they will remain enrolled in the virtual course. Again, we are carefully looking at those courses. There are a lot of things that are showing up in the catalogs that are in a MoCap approved, from a MoCap approved vendor, but not a MoCap approved course. So that's why the counselors and the principals will have to work through with families to make sure that those enrollments are set up and correct. What else did I want you to know? Waivers are in place. I think that's where we are. We've been getting a steady stream of questions. I know that this is a really difficult decision for families. I'm feeling that, you know, folks are wanting to make the very best decisions for their children. We've had questions about, you know, will they, how will they get support if they're in a MoCap course? So we just want to assure folks that regardless of what you choose, you're going to be with a Missouri certified teacher, preferably with our teacher. If we can make that happen, except for in situations at the high school where we may not have the right certifications or staffing, you'll still have access to our counseling departments. We will have individualized plans. We will be watching students' progress. And I think we're we're ready to roll. I think principals are anxious. We're meeting tomorrow morning actually to go over all the procedures again and walk through all the provisions of this policy so that everybody understands how things are going to work. Do you have any questions for me? Do you have any questions for me?
Roxanna. I appreciate that there's been a lot of Zoom meetings today, yesterday with the building leadership. Appreciate that some of the themes that have come up there and then emails and others are being lifted up here. I mean, I certainly would be interested to hear if there are other reactions or questions or concerns that are coming up as you know, folks are able to interact directly with administrators about this and some other things too.
I think one of the biggest questions that we have received is what happens if we pick a track and and we don't like it? I think if you start virtual, if someone starts virtual and it's not working, they can easily be folded back into an MRH classroom onsite. It doesn't work quite the same way the other way because we have to work through vendors that have enrollment deadlines. And so we have been advising folks that if you believe that you want your child to stay out, then you should take the virtual option with an MRH teacher, at least K through six with support because there there are windows that we have to abide by by policy. And also, you know, based on all of the way the laws are intersecting, there's just a lot of hurdles with with how all of that works because everything assumes that there will be at least some seat time. Or unless, you know, the district would be on extended emergency closure. So I think that's probably the biggest question that that we've received. And we're trying to answer that as transparently as we possibly can about how all this works while we're, you know, abiding by policy. And I know it's a really difficult decision for families.
Roxanna and Karen, there have been some families that have said it's difficult for them to make a decision on what to choose by August 10th because they aren't sure what the metrics are or what's going to be used to move throughout the tiers. And so can you kind of tell us like what can be explained to those families so they feel confident about making a decision? Excuse me, even if we're not able to give them those metrics by that time, or if we are able to give it to them before August 10th?
Roxanna, you want to take that? I have the metric.
Sure. Well, so so we are asking for folks to give us their preferences by August 10th. So first thing I would say is you're not in, you're not, you won't be enrolled by August 10th. You will be designating your choice by August 10th, which starts an enrollment process. Okay, because after that, we've got to go through and work with families to get the enrollments in place and actually place the enrollments with MoCap. That gives us a good idea in terms of what to do with our staffing and how to begin to think about those separations. But specific to the metrics, and I know that that's on a lot of folks' minds, if you recall, Spring Schmidt was with us. And she was talking about the fact that we have to look at a broad variety of of factors along with community context. Karen, I know, is following up with a superintendent's group, and I think there's a call later this week to talk about what those metrics might look like for a more regional response. But you know, we want to make sure that conditions are safe for return. So ultimately, this board will have the responsibility of deciding when we move between tiers. And you are not going to make that decision lightly. When we do move between tiers, we can assure families that everything in our Tier Two plan is designed to have appropriate social distancing to reduce density, and we have implemented every recommended layer of protection. So when when folks come back into the buildings, they can be assured that we have done everything possible according to the guidance we've been given to create safe, low-density environments for for a return. So that that's what I can say. Educationally, we've done due diligence to make sure whichever either option you choose, your child is going to have a good experience aligned to Missouri learning standards, and there are not going to be learning gaps when they come back. I can say that with confidence. I can say if you choose to be onsite, I feel confident the board will make a responsible decision based on community conditions. And when we come back into the buildings, the administration will have done everything that is humanly possible to make sure that conditions are set up following the best guidance that we have at the time in terms of what's going to be safe. And Karen, do you want to talk about the metrics portion?
Well, just a little bit. And also just to ask the board if we can have an extended conversation at another time to begin the thought and deliberation. Because as Roxanna had mentioned a moment ago, the regional superintendent's group has worked together. Actually, it's the work from Matt Goodman and also the support and consultation from the regional health professionals to develop this dashboard. And I feel that it's in a position now, I would love, and Katie, I tried to get ahold of you earlier to discuss if by chance, if you all are interested in hearing from Matt Goodman and how he developed this dashboard and the three metrics that the health professionals have recommended to include in this metrics or matrix. So, yeah, it's very difficult to nail things down in terms of a school calendar saying, yes, it'll be one quarter and it may not be, it may be longer. And I hear and understand and completely identify with the frustration that families are having because many of them are looking at childcare and then their jobs. Like, there are a lot of major family decisions hinging on this. And with great enthusiasm, I'm working with the superintendents to try and nail some things down. And I just, I guess, ask the board if you all are interested in considering this. This dashboard is being one of the things that we're looking at and using these data points that we have kind of created for this this dashboard to monitor and go through like the thresholds. Because really, you have, just like with other dashboards, you have red, yellow, and green. So it's they're recommending that the yellow is when you go to blend it. And so that's kind of the conversation. You have to feel what is your comfort level, knowing that we've gone through our plans, what Roxanna just talked about a moment ago, we have our layers of protection. Now we have to think about that and we have to think, okay, how often do you want to check? You know, one of the things that the health professionals are saying, you know, you have to pay attention to the arc. Right now, we're at a high peak right now. It's essentially an outbreak that we're trying to to manage in the community. But when it starts to come down, what is, what is it that you feel comfortable with? And then also, one of the things that has been recommended, we need to look at data that the health professionals aren't recording, like our student and staff attendance because we have delayed test results. We could have spaces where we have a long or several staff out. And it will impact the teaching that's going on right now. So we just, there's things as a board, you know, you all. I guess we're getting to the point now where we really need to talk about reentry and what you want to to monitor and discuss and consider, okay? These are all the things. This is what this community spread looks like now. What are specific things going on in our community that we also want to monitor and make sure, okay, we're ready to go in terms of having a blended environment? So I guess, would you all be interested in seeing this dashboard and having it presented as the beginning stages of trying to determine what it would look like to reenter?
I mean, I would want to, I'd want to discuss everything. I don't, you know, I'm not going to speak for the rest of my board members, but I think that one of the issues is how fluid this is. It's changing daily. So we want to be as informed as possible. We want to know what all the options are, the angles, the avenues. You know, we want all of our kids to be educated and and safe. And so any any information that helps us make these decisions, I'm all for it as soon as possible so that we can use that and apply that to our decisions.
I did, I don't know if you noticed, but when Spring was with us and we we made some recommendations, the county is now releasing corridor data that we requested, so we can get data that's specific to what they're calling the central corridor, which would be Maplewood, Richmond Heights, and a few of the surrounding areas. And that's been very helpful and it's much more detailed than the data that we were getting prior. So that is a good step forward in terms of helping us really be able to pinpoint, you know, what it looks like on the ground specifically to our area. So that was a very favorable outcome. I'm not sure that was directly due to her visit with us, but whatever precipitated it, I do feel like we we have a lot of information that we didn't have prior.
I agree with Brandy. Blame the point. I agree.
I'm 100% in agreement. The more data we can get, MRH is a data-driven school district. We make good decisions based upon good data. So as frequently as we need to be provided it, I'm game for it. This is a huge decision. It's easy to make on emotion, but we really need the hard facts in front of us to guide us.
Well, I I'm fully on board with any data-driven decisions we can make. So yeah, let's have a look at the dashboard for sure.
I agree also with everybody, and that information is very vital in us making a decision about reentry. So I'm in agreement with everyone else.
All in favor? Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, and Karen, I'm, obviously, we haven't seen what Matt has put together, but I do. I interpret from what you just said that we may need to augment with a few metrics around like teacher attendance, student attendance, and I think taking a look at student attendance, both in the fully virtual platform and the MRH, its learning virtual platform would be helpful for for that. I mean, I I think you all should just go ahead and propose you know, some data that we're already collecting, some metrics, and obviously we'll ask for additional things if those come up. I recognize that the the challenge of a dashboard is making it not every data point, but points to communicate. So I trust we have all the educator assessment brains on this. Y'all can bring us back your best draft.
Yes, we will. I guess the first step, I'm going to try and get a hold of Matt, figure out his availability, and Katie, I'll work with you. So you all can see it and you can ask questions about how he actually created this and why he chose the three metrics that are in the dashboard. So I know, Katie, you've seen his presentation a couple of times, haven't you?
You know, I actually haven't been in any of the conversations that he's presented in, so.
Okay, I was just assuming that okay, so yeah, I will get that going. So I'll let you know as soon as possible about his availability.
All right, we'll move along then to Ed opening day conversation here. You gotta unmute, though.
Yeah, I've got to unmute on. Thank you. Good evening. So we have a lot of traditions here at MRH, and some of them are community-wide and some of them are more internal. But from my vantage point in communications, the most anticipated annual event is opening day, which of course has nothing to do with baseball. A normal opening day is a themed party which takes place in the morning about a week before classes begin. It's a party designed to foster community building and positive morale. It gives teachers and support staff an opportunity to reunite after two and a half or three months apart. They trade vacation stories, maybe share some ideas about how to launch the new academic year. We would normally serve up a big hearty breakfast. We hear a rousing address by Superintendent Hall, and we give away trinkets and we play silly games. Well, clearly, we cannot duplicate that experience this year, but I believe we can mount an effort to create a suitable and safe substitute. And my idea is this, let's invite employees to come down to the high school commons. This would be on Wednesday, August 26th, which is a very busy day for returning teachers and support staff. We would do it within a three-hour timeframe. People can show up as they are available and partake of some nice summertime treats courtesy of a dessert truck, which I've identified, and tentatively booked, as well as some live music. So if you open the attachments on the agenda, you'll see that I located an ice cream truck, which was converted from a 1949 fire engine. They offer a lot of treats, including some non-milk-based confections for people who may require that. Most importantly, they are a fixture at various community events, and they are well-versed in best practices related to health and safety. They have all the necessary permits to operate anywhere in the county. I would park them out here on the high school lot. I would deploy my communication staff to act as social distancing police, for lack of a better term, for those staff members who would choose to participate. As for the entertainment, we've reached out to a popular local Latin music artist who has a multicultural repertoire, which I believe our staff would enjoy very much. He's a name, he's a draw, Javier Mendoza. He's performed here before, I'm told. And for what it's worth, he's a close associate of our high school principal. Now, having said all that, I know that we need to reconcile this whole idea with the fact that we are not permitting students to return to our buildings. The logical and the fair question is, why would we invite MRH employees to come back for a gathering if it's not safe for kids? My reply is, we are reasonably able to manage the behavior of adults who, in my view, my experience, are already pretty keenly attuned to best safety practices. And I'm thinking back to July 25th, when we held our drive-through graduation ceremony, everyone was on their best behavior, meaning they resisted the urge to do hugs and high fives, but it was still a pretty rousing and satisfying experience for everyone. It's it's no small matter that this is a highly cost-effective way to pull off an opening day event. I can do this at about a third the cost of a normal opening day, and I bring this up only because we're living in a period when my department communications needs to be sort of repurposing funds to account for much more frequent and different types of communication to our community. I have considered conducting a staff survey to determine if they're interested in this whole notion. My educated guess is that we would get roughly like a 50/50, maybe 60/40 response, kind of similar to our other surveys about their feelings on reentry to the buildings. And I know this is a, this is sensitive territory. You know, some employees may be conflicted or feel some apprehensive or some apprehension rather about perceptions or judgments by their coworkers. And I also realize that we need to assure our larger community that we can accomplish this in the safest possible way. So if we're going to do this, it's about two and a half weeks away, and I would need to compensate our vendors. I respectfully ask at this time for the board's input. And if this does not seem like a favorable approach to opening day, I do have what I'll call some partially baked alternative ideas for how to pull this off off of district property. Your thoughts, please?
The the last meeting that we had, I know we had a discussion on like the need for teachers to go into our buildings so they can have like their their tools and other materials. And so I think for me, I I just kind of thought, you know, central office would have a plan in place already to make sure that teachers would be safe and protected. And I think for me, that kind of just, I just assumed, which is not always good, I recognize that, but I just assumed that you all would already, you know, be be but I just assumed that you all would already, you know, be thinking about ways to do this safely so you can celebrate the teachers and assist with their morale, but also keep people safe. So I guess I'm just saying, I don't have any concerns just because of what you all already have in place.
Yeah, like I said, using the, and you were there, using the drive-through graduation as kind of a template. We've got a large space out there where I believe we can manage people's movements. And again, I talk to our employees all the time. I know how they feel. I know what their proclivities are. They want to be safe, you know. This is not a group of people who are going to let their emotions overcome them and do things that might jeopardize themselves or someone else. So that's my.
Yeah, I would say we do have a, actually, the handbook is going out tomorrow, but we do have a re-entry handbook that has clearly identified protocols for all staff members, everything from wearing masks to social distancing. So there are very clear protocols that are in place and are going to be reemphasized before re-entry.
Yes, the handbook is amazing.
Thank you.
It's really good.
It's impressive. And honestly, I don't expect a lot of people to show up, not because, not out of fear, but it's a very busy time. That's basically our first work day back for people and people have things to do. They're going to be really, really busy. And I just don't expect a huge turnout, so I don't expect a mob.
Well, my only concern goes to the size of the turnout. If you were to get a big crowd, I know that that high school parking lot's a fairly sizable piece of ground and you might need to consider moving to the football field or something like that. I don't know, just to make sure people can stay distant. But other than that, I, these are all adults. They know what they need to do to keep themselves and others safe. I don't have a problem with this myself.
That's a great idea, Wes. I appreciate that. And I forgot to mention that I also contacted a lieutenant with the Maplewood Police Department and in order to prevent people from thinking this is a public event, you know, people driving along the street might see an ice cream truck and think, hey, looks good. We could close off the street for that brief period as well.
I don't have any problems with it. I trust our staff. I trust you, Ed, to host it and I was part of graduation and I thought it was set up to the actual event. Everybody was safe, so, and I think we need to celebrate them and it's optional. If they don't feel like they need to be there, then they don't come.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement with everything that was just said by all my board members.
Same here, yeah. And I think, I mean, this is always the highlight of the beginning of the year and staff and everyone really enjoys doing these kinds of things. I know we can't do it like we've done in the past. I think this is a thoughtful alternative. I appreciate the work that's gone into this.
Wes, I'll look into that idea. Thanks.
Yeah, I was going to say, Ed, I'm in agreement as long as board members have an option to come, too.
I'll ponder that.
All righty. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're right.
All right, thank you, Ed. If there's nothing else for the work session, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I move to enter executive session in accordance with Section 610.021, subsections 3, 9, 11, 12, and 13, and section 610.022 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri on August 6, 2020 for the following specific reasons: personnel matters, finance matters.
Second.
Thank you, Nikki and Brandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will reconvene in executive session momentarily. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.